I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We do have a change in the hiring recommendations, which would be the addition of items 115 through 119. So those will have to be read into the motion exactly. And we're removing the transportation report from the agenda. There's no closed session minutes from October 11th because we didn't have a closed session. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
John, I would like to have Hodges and Maruzi's bill voted on separately. And I forgot to let you all know, but Carol informed me that she's now having it done separately. So Carol, I don't understand now, will that amount be in the total that we're voting on? Or has that been excluded from the total?
We didn't do it this time.
You didn't do what?
You didn't subtract it?
Oh, you didn't subtract it.
Right, our plan is next board meeting they fill me two motions if there are any bills for Hodges.
So you'll do the math for us?
I have math ready.
Okay.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We'll do that at the time.
All right.
Okay.
And then I'd like to ask that we remove item E and bring it back at the next meeting for more information. Item E? Item E under new business. Oh, I'm no wonder, I'm in the wrong spot.
I think we need to go ahead and take care of that.
Pardon?
I think we need to go ahead and do that.
Well...
We're gonna dismiss him anyway, he's already dismissed, he's gone, so. And he says he's under it, so we're gonna do that.
Number one, procedurally it has to be great, number two, on the agenda, it doesn't give his name, which is required.
Right.
And I think that the board needs additional information before we can vote on it. Fine.
It's not a motion.
It's not.
It just says dismiss.
Right.
So the agenda doesn't have his name on it, so it needs to be brought back in.
Okay. Works for me. So, we have a few changes. I have them all noted, so we'll go through that as the time goes through. So it will be approved, the agenda as amended.
Certainly.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Walls. Mr. Monda?
Yes.
Mrs. DeYoung.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Six yes, one to carry.
Very good, the next item on the agenda is recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We did, as we did last year, we got great news from attendance week in Lake County. So may I ask Mr. Meyer, Mr. Keely to come up? Accept a certificate on behalf of the district. As you know, keeping our attendance high in the district is extremely important for us. It's on our strategic plan. Obviously, the kids need to be here for us to educate them well. And I know that through Pat and Brad's leadership, it stems down through all our staff members and their encouragement to our kids, and really trying to set some procedures in place. And it proves that it does work when you focus on it, on it, and try to put some systems in place. Obviously, results come along with them. So amongst the high schools, we were third. Amongst high schools, we were third at over ninety-six, ninety-six point oh six, I think, is what we were at the high school in Lake County. And obviously, that's above in the excellent threshold even within our strategic plan. I just want to congratulate Pat and Brad on their great work. Good job, Mr. Anderson. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is the reception of visitors. Is there a visitor here that would like to address the board this evening? Was there any written testimony given to the board? Okay, we're good. Next item on the agenda is the president's report with the IASB Joint Conference issue, not issues, but the recommendations, which we passed out last meeting. We still have one more meeting before we have to make any decisions or recommendations. So we don't have to discuss it in detail today. So we can, I just want to remind everybody, so if you do have any thoughts, I think we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, which will still be fresh back before we go to the conference itself. That's all right with everyone, just remember to take a look at it, please. Okay, committee reports. We have an insurance committee?
The insurance committee met on September 28th. We actually met for two hours, which we did a very thorough review with another broker that works with a lot of schools to get additional information and look at our insurance options going forward. We asked that broker many questions on recommendations that he might make for us. And this is one of about a series of six insurance meetings we will have during the year. So we're really doing a deep dive in insurance this year.
Carol?
Yes.
You put the questions in the minutes.
I did.
But did you, I don't see answers on some of them. I assume we got an answer, but like, how does an employer make a decision to change if they don't get information for sixty days out and there's no answer? Were there answers given at this meeting?
There was discussions and some answers, yes. It was, we could certainly, if you want me to amend the minutes, I could do that.
I think it would be helpful for the board members since we were not there.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, one more question, move on to the strategic plan. Committee, which met October 11th?
Thank, thanks to the board members for your leadership and regards to our strategic plan. I'm passing around what is an update. What we're referring to is our 2016 addendum. And so we've worked hard with our administrative staff at taking with the changes, recommended language changes, as well as adding some goals and timelines. And so just looking through this very quickly, this will be our working document for this year. This is a reminder, on the front page is our mission beliefs and formulas for success. We've modified the letter, that's on page two, so when this is put online or sent out to people, they know what it's referencing in terms of our October 11th meeting. The third page is the, what we reviewed at the meeting, which is actually the goals and timelines from fifteen and sixteen, and the evidence of their completion. Page four were our metrics, if you will, that the board's looked at a few times. And the one suggestion that came out of the curriculum instruction assessment group, we added one greatness indicator under the superior performance and student academic achievement in regards to just students that are enrollments that we have in others in AP classes. It was just a number that we were also interested in, so we added one number there. And for the most part, this will be kind of an accountability page for us moving forward. And then what we did on the next two pages, we went from one page to two pages, on the sixteen-seventeen end of action plan for our staff to follow. And we think we captured the great majority of the suggestions and comments that came out from everybody, and that was at the strategic plan. So at this point in time, our thoughts are we're starting to move forward on the goals and timelines that are on the sixteen-seventeen plan. And obviously, this will continue to be a working document.
John, is this gonna be posted?
Yeah, we'll put this online under the strategic planning session. We'll also send it out, a couple of staff members had some great requests, due to send it out to them with a little bit of context. So if they're a little bit removed from the committee, we're still in touch with what we're doing on a bigger picture, so.
That's great, I appreciate it.
Perfect.
October 1.
Yep, good meeting. Let's look away, it's beautiful. The next item is curriculum committee.
The curriculum committee met October 19th, and Chris and Michelle ran the meeting in my absence. So they went through the changes in the curriculum guide for the seventeen-eighteen school year. So there's an overview in that, and I think you have the minutes in your document there, your board docs. We're adding three new courses. One is Math Four, and that's basically to help our students when they go to CLC so that they would not have to take remedial coursework. So we're working with CLC to make sure we're covering the topics that they need in order for them to test out of remedial coursework and so that they can go into credit bearing math classes. So that's been an issue in the past, so we're trying to rectify that. The other one, material science, it's basically a senior science course that students might be interested in instead of going the AP route or just to study chemistry or physics. And this is kind of a material science, it's kind of a catch-all for those seniors who would still like to continue on science, but they don't have a specific angle or a specific, how do I say this, course in their curriculum, like chemistry or biology. The other one is a theater design and technology course. And this is, would be a new course for the theater department, obviously. And it's basically behind the scenes in the theater. Many of our students, when they go on and they study theater, that's the area that they study, like set design and costume design and lighting and sound. And so we thought that would be a great opportunity for our students to get that aspect of theater, and so that they could be prepared when they wanted to study that in college. So those are three new courses, and then just the curriculum guide changes. So is there any questions? I don't know, we, yeah.
Backing up to science.
Yes.
It's only open to seniors. Why, I guess, I would ask, why are we diseliminating it to seniors and not juniors?
Because our core sequence that we are recommending for our students is to go biology, chemistry, physics. I mean, so we want them to have those three courses so that they get a wide range of opportunity in all three of those areas, and then they can study in a different area.
But suppose, this is a position, that a student is a junior and is taking, has taken, or is taking the last of the three, and wants to take this class at the same time and is academically able to do that? That student is denied the ability to take the class?
There are other science courses that they could take their junior year, if they double up. And chances are junior year, they don't have enough room, and they're scheduled to do a lot of those doubles up. So, but if they did, they can double up with a different science, and then we want to keep this material science for just the seniors, for their fourth year.
They're not cut off from taking science classes, please.
Oh, no. No, no, I just thought if they were academically able to take it and chose to, like some kids go to summer school and get some of their, summer schools basically were remedial, but let's say they take some classes at CLC during the summer. And so they're a little bit ahead of their peers. That's what I'm looking at. So would there be a possible wiggle room somewhere?
You know what, I think for this next year, let's see where we go with seniors, and then we can talk to the state's department to see if they would like to open it up.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's also some corrections that need to be made relative to the post-high school guide, and particularly on page 117, where it talks about FASFA. FASFA changed, and there were big changes that went into effect this year. So on here, we're still referencing the January 1 date, but that has been changed. And according to the FASFA website, students now were able to file, they're able to file beginning October 1st rather than January 1st. And that submission date is a permanent change. It says enabling students to complete and submit their FASFA as early as October 1st every year. And so that's allowing these kids to then use the prior, their parents' prior year's tax return, rather than sometimes missing out on money when it was January 1st and maybe their parents filed an extension, and then the money was gone because the tax return wasn't submitted. So if this is for next year's curriculum guide, this needs to be updated with those big changes and that information on FASFA.
I'm going to Heather and Carrie McGahan, Heather Eklund and Carrie McGahan, and I'll ask them to rework that part before we actually put that on the website. Okay, thank you.
And then there's supposed to be a class, I think, in January for parents to do FASFA, but if, they should have done it in October?
You've already done a class for FASFA?
But in here, in this proposed guide, it's talking about January, but if we're talking to people about that October deadline, then we need those parents, like they did this year, coming in and doing it like right away in August, early September. Because a lot of parents were caught off guard by that, and so they were surprised.
We did adjust, and we communicated with our parents. We just, we just need to update this, but our senior parents definitely, they were, we did workshops, they actually got to do it all on the computer with our counselors.
Some informed parents are, but like my son's father doesn't know and didn't know, and so it's created a lot of confusion, two different pieces of information.
We'll get that corrected.
Thank you.
That's a good, thanks. Mark, they did that, just change their charges.
Yeah. It is like Karen said, a lot of parents missed out because they had to file extensions because they...
If they had business, they, whatever, some kind of, yeah. And so if they're doing an extension until October, their child's not gonna get a chance. Because in Illinois, it's first come, first served, in terms of how the money is distributed.
Right, right.
Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report then.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We do have, we did have one FOIA from the NEA/IEA. They were looking for information on our individuals who are employed under a non-certified support staff role. They were looking for names of positions, hours worked, things of that nature. And they were also looking for contracts that we have with subcontractors who might be doing that kind of non-certified work. So obviously, we'll respond to them accordingly. It was a lot of individuals, so as we do from time to time, we ask for an extension, make sure we have the time to do that. We have our normal monthly reports in now, so we're, the student year underway here. And Carol, who the treasurer's report?
Put it in your board pack as a treasurer's report for August. And with only two months into the year, there's really not a lot to talk about. What I wanted to talk about is just to remind the board that we will be having our bond sale, refinancing our 2007 and 2008 A series of bonds. Had to be November 1st if the market conditions warrant. I also wanted to draw your attention to the credit report from Standard and Poor's. We did a presentation with Standard and Poor's. They reaffirmed our AA plus AA rating, which is very good news for the district. I did highlight, I reported in your board pack, and I did highlight three items, three comments that they had made. The district had very strong reserves, was strong financial management practices. And then they also, in their outlook, said their expectation that the district maintains strong reserves and adheres to its fund balance policy and continues to monitor revenue and expenses and to maintain balanced operations. So, and they've also indicated in their downside scenario that if we have a structural imbalance or weakening of the economy, that it would put pressure on our ratings. So we did adopt a deficit budget, but the analysts are telling us how important it is to maintain balanced budgets. So we will be working towards that with our administrative team.
As always.
And that concludes my report. Unless there are any questions?
Good.
One other small item, so we did get an issue in from press. So we were thinking about having a policy, can we possibly prior to the December board meeting? There's quite a few policies in there, but it says we solidify a date. That's what we were thinking of, the counterpart that was prior to the December board meeting. And so for the superintendent's.
Okay. So item E has been removed from the agenda. So we have the audit for fiscal year June 3, 2016.
I'd like to introduce Betsy Allen from the firm Miller Cooper. Betsy's a partner and is a big part of the, really the head of the review team that conducts our audit and goes through its finances. So she's going to make some brief comments about the audit.
Yes, I will be brief.
Oh, before, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Betsy, before you do that, you have copies of the audit.
I thought you were gonna have, if we were gonna get them.
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I need a paper, wait.
Thank you.
That's a good name for them.
All righty.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Of course, I'm so happy, I'll sit by myself next year. I was thinking it was a possibility. Can you have come a couple years ago? I think you wanted to stay home for the dumb scheme tonight.
Oh, sure, the girls have to go out and not be guys.
So it's all good, it's okay. So quick, I just want to point out a few things. Pretty much, you're gonna see the same document that you saw last year. I'll go through that, and then our required communication to the board letter. First of all, I just want to say that the business office staff did an exceptional job as they obviously do being ready for the audit. Everything was ready when we got here. You know, the office is very well run, and you'll see from our testing and the procedure that we did, how we prepared in the audit. We'll have the issue management letter that would have the control efficiencies that we would have found during the audit. So quickly, to start, page one is our independent auditor's report, which is unmodified, full opinion. That is like, is the highest level of assurance we can give as auditors in an opinion in an audit. Page five starts a management's discussion and analysis, which is prepared by Carol. I probably told you guys before, and I always tell all the boards, if you don't like to read the whole audit, it's a great document to read. It really summarizes the financial highlights of the district along with a different kind of, different kind of statements, I'm sorry, that are contained within the audit and has listing of summarized financial statements. Page 13 starts the actual financial statements of the audit. Just one thing I want to point out here. You will see in the asset section, the net pension asset that's being reported this year of approximately $20,000. That's the, from the Gatsby 68 implementation last year. It's the IMRF part of that net pension liability. Due to the extra payment that you made to IMRF to pay some of the money toward your unfunded, you now have a net pension asset of about $20,000 with IMRF.
Thank you, John.
Page 18 and 19 is really sort of the income statement of the district. It's more of the fund financial statements that you're probably used to seeing on a monthly basis. As you will see, the total of all funds at an annual fund balance of approximately $27 million, and it's up about $76,000 from the prior year. The next section of the audit starts on page 23, and that's the notes of the financial statements. The notes of the financial statements just contain a lot of the detail of the amounts that are reported within the audit. A lot of the details, significant account policies, along with detail of all the debt of the district and the capital assets. The only new thing that you'll see in here this year is a reference to Gatsby 72. It really didn't change any reporting, it had to do with carrying investments at fair value, certain investment which the district does not hold at all. So there was just a few footnote tweaks that you might see. And then the remaining part of the document are just some statisticals, just make schedules, along with detailed information by fund, comparing budgets to actuals, and then prior year information for each fund held by the district. The final section, one more statistical section I wanted to point out, it's a calculation of the operating cost per pupil. You will see this year that that number did go up by a couple thousand dollars for your district, and that was all due to you paying, paying toward your unfunded liability. So next year, that number should go and be more comparable to the fiscal year 15 number. So we did a lot of research on it, and we're looking at it, and it really was, that jump was really all due to that extra payment that you made to IMRF. And then quickly, I just wanted, we have our, do they have this, Carol, the required?
Yes.
There's, we have our required communication to the board letter. Where is it? Is it in here?
It is in your board docs. Oh, in board docs, okay.
But just real quickly, we talked about our responsibility as auditors. It also presents to you any of the Gatsby statements, such as Gatsby 72 we just discussed that were implemented during the year. It'll also talk to you about the statements that are applicable in future years. Some of them will be applicable, the district some won't, but we like to put them all out there to you. The one that will be applicable, and probably have the most substance to it, will be in a couple of years when your other post-employment benefits that we report, you've got to put that whole liability on your books too, as we did for TRS and IMRA. But that's not till fiscal year 18, so we have a couple of years before that happens. The letter also stated, as I stated before, we had no difficulties in getting the audit done. We had no audit adjustments and no uncorrected errors. And then lastly, when the report was issued on October 14th, the administration did sign their management representation letter for us in order to have all the documents released. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have some questions in regards to the activity funds, because there seemed to be a lot of discussion amongst parents groups about what was going on with the activity accounts and activity funds and things like the band boosters who, they're, they're the own 501(c)(3), but they want to know why are we holding money when they're the wrong organization? So I'm just curious what you did with the audit of those activity funds, because there's just been a lot of discussion amongst the parents about...
What procedures do we do for student activity funds? Is that what you're asking?
Were they audited? What were the procedures?
Yeah, they're part of our audit. We look at, we look at student activity funds pretty closely, just to, due to the nature of them, and that they are a more risky area, there's a lot of money that goes through them. We look at bank reconciliations and do a lot of testing on the bank reconciliations. We also take a sample of, of actual dispersments that are paid on the activity fund to make sure that they're reasonable and accurate student activity expenditures, and that they have all the proper documentation and sign up on them. We also do what we call a student activity fund analytical, where we look at every line item within the student activity fund and look at the ins and outs of them. And we do set a scope, so we're not looking at every, you know, every line item. We set a scope, because for the student activity fund, pretty much the money you're bringing in to an activity should be paid out. And if there's a, if there is an activity where there's a lot of money still sitting there, you know, we talk to the business office and say, you know, why is this here? A lot of times, for example, it might be like a band who's saving up for a couple of years to go on a big trip. So we, you know, look at all the different line items within there and make sure no activity has a negative balance at the end of the year too.
So can you explain why on page 99 it's listed that we're holding band booster money when they're at their own established 501(c)(3)?
I would have to explain that for you.
Okay.
I can explain that for you. Okay, band boosters do their own activity.
Right.
There are fundraisers that are banned of apart from the band boosters. And that's what you're gonna see in the activity accounts.
Okay, so it's a separate...
So it's not the actual, it's not the actual band boosters that have their own 501(c)(3), it's...
Yeah, our, our account is...
Your account.
What we're doing internally.
So maybe just for, for the public perception, then it just should be classified differently? If it's ours, it's been school run versus boosters? Because the perception amongst the parent boosters is that boosters is, boosters is booster, band boosters.
I think we, we have it removed in Skyward, and we'll make sure we get it removed in the audit.
Which one are you, which one are you looking at?
I'm not...
The band boosters and page 99.
Page 99, convenience, yeah. Thank, thank this guy.
I see, I see now. So maybe that's just a wording.
Wording change.
Have to make sure we update.
That's not near enough money for the band boosters.
No.
No, but they're thinking why that's our money holding there.
Yeah, there's, there's no second.
They know who they should be asking that is their president.
Asking you?
They should, no.
Oh, their president.
President of the band booster should know that that's not their money.
Did they ask them?
I don't, I haven't been to one of their meetings, but it's very, they're having an upcoming fair this weekend, and it's, there's a lot of chatter that goes on.
Well, I understand that, but maybe when you hear that kind of chatter, you should say, well, let's go ask the president of the band booster. the president of the band booster so we can find out if that is our money. I mean, because it's not, but this is okay.
The president does know about...
He should, he should know that it's not their money because it's not part of the books that they're keeping on their end. Because we don't know what they have. We don't even see their money.
Right, because they're separate.
Right, I understand that.
So he should know that this is not his money because he's managing his own money. They have a treasure.
Yes.
I understand that.
We can explain that. I'm not saying that. But I think generally speaking, if they have a question about how the band boosters are running their money, they should ask them.
In our audit, why are we saying that we're holding band boosters money? And so I said, come to the meeting and ask, go to their meeting. There's, you know, the band boosters that...
It's fine, I understand.
People may not really talk at their meetings, they just listen.
I think too, I mean...
That's okay, I guess it's all good, but I mean, that's, that's where they should look for their answers. If they're in the group, I mean, if they're not in the group and they're curious, honestly, we would be there.
Parent group, that's very active.
I know, I have people that are asking the question.
I think like Carol said, maybe...
For transparency purposes, if this is not, because they call themselves band boosters, so then this should be classified as activity.
Have to make sure it doesn't create confusion. Thank you for your comment. We'll make sure it's updated on the next audit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roger that. Okay.
Any other questions or...
I'm just going to give one quick comment here.
Go.
From an operating standpoint, fund standpoint, we ran a deficit of $235,000, which means we lost $235,000 of fund balance. In terms of our budget, we were 0.62% above our revenue budget and 1.04% above our expenditure budget, which means we are about 0.4% off on our deficit versus our projected break even.
What was that point?
0.4.
Thank you.
So, very, very close, and that's just because we had pushed some projects along early. So I wanted the board to be aware of that number. Also, in the annual financial report, the A F R, as it's called, which is in your board packet, we are now classified as financial review versus financial recognition from last year.
Can you give us the, tell us and explain to us the difference, please?
Yes, financial recognition, there's a weighted score. You have to score 0.37 above a certain criteria. We scored 3.35, so that means financial recognition is the top echelon of schools. We fall into the second category now.
And there's, there's four categories?
Yes, four categories.
What, what caused the fall?
Just the, the small deficit that we ran.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's all that caused that. So we expect that, you know, if we have a break due to budget, we'll be back in recognition. Okay, and I want to thank the business office because they really do work very, very hard in getting this all, the audit done, so. Thanks, Betsy?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the curriculum guide, which we've already made some changes to. So if we make a motion and to say that it's as, with the amended F A S information.
Can we do it as a draft and print back?
We have to go to the...
Are we in a time draft?
We're not really going to print, we don't go to print.
Just put it on the white side.
I can remind the board too, that similar to the parent teacher handbook, if we see things, I mean, on our end, right, from a working document...
We can change it immediately.
We see errors in there, we correct them. Like if we saw another error in there that was wrong, we would want to correct it before we wanted to print for our families without necessarily bringing it back to the board if it were something as clean as that. So just as a reminder that, I mean, we need that kind of flexibility in terms of our...
Oh, yeah, of course.
I would like to make an amendment, a motion then, with that F A S, with the F A S changes. So I move to approve the changes in the 2017-18 curriculum guide and the 2017-2018 new course proposals as amended with the updated F A S.
Second. Roll call.
So the motion is by Conway and the second was by Lunda? Mrs. Biandi? Mrs. Biandi?
I heard you.
Okay.
I'm sorry. It's okay. Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Next item is this, approval of serious safety hazards.
Tina Delory did review the safety hazards. There are no changes to the six that we already have, so we're asking the board to approve the six safety hazards, serious safety hazards that exist.
I move to approve the serious safety hazards for the 2016-2017 school year as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Motion by Biandi, second by Manda. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the bus leases.
We did go out to bid for thirty-seven seventy-seven passenger buses on October sixth. These are going to be a three-year lease with a two-year extension. Price includes service on all buses. We received one bid from Midwest Transit Equipment. The price, assuming we sign the lease by May first, which we would do if the board approves, would be a total of $435,009. We may reduce the number to thirty-five buses. We're going to do that analysis. So there isn't a typo in this memo, but I just wanted to point out to the board that these units are about a little over $5,000 in total, less than what we paid in 2001. So that's good news. Questions, please?
Well, Carol, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Remember last year when we were talking about architects? And we asked you to, at the triple I conference, to speak to the architects and let them know we were going to be bidding? And we only got one bid for the buses? And I'm wondering if you could work your magic again and maybe get a better bus bid at the triple I? Because all the bus companies are there. Is that a possibility? That we throw this, not throw it out, but whatever we need to do with this bid? Or put it on, I don't know, but somehow you work your magic again? Because I remember last year when Catherine was going around, you had already been there early in the morning and talked to them. So if you could, then it'd be wonderful.
Well, you would have to approve this bid because we won't have school buses if you don't. We can't wait till the triple I. So...
Can you explain to me why? Do they have to make the buses, I mean, make the buses?
They only make so many chassis is what they do.
Okay, I don't know, so you have to explain this to us.
Yes, yes, the management bachelor only makes so many chassis for buses. And so the supply is, the supply, it doesn't go up, so we like to lock in. We're, we're very happy to see the lower price. The other thing that you need to take into consideration is the board, is that we don't have an onsite mechanic, so there's a service agreement with this for onsite service. Not all bus companies do that. We did have another vendor come to the bid opening, but they did not bid. And there's three bus companies that, that are available. So once a bit at a bid, one came to the bid. But I certainly would talk to them on future bids and we're certainly looking to do our entire fleet with thirty fifty-six. And I've posed that question to them. So there may be some better pricing when thirty fifty-six in the next month is, is looking at their fleet because they're on an annual lease. So if that would...
Does that cost the board because they're on an annual lease?
It depends on the type of buses and the options that they have. So, but we'll see if we can work some, you know, better deal and get thirty fifty-six for both of us, for thirty fifty-six.
The same bus.
I would like to take that route.
So you're talking about then in a, in a month, doing a, in a governmental agreement with theirs and...
Right.
Okay. I think that sounds good.
Right.
Okay, I like it.
And I'll move to approve the school bus lease to Midwest Transit.
Second.
Okay, so clarification. I thought Carol was talking about doing a, what are you talking about putting out to join with fifty-six then? And I thought we were going to...
Well, fifty-six is sort of, they're going out now and, and negotiating their buses. They don't actually go out to bid like we do. They negotiate it. So what we would do is work with Midwest Transit and see if we could even reduce our price further if we do both fleets.
If we get both of, if we get District Fifty-Six to agree to.
Yeah. So you're approving a lease at this price, but I'm sure you wouldn't mind if the price went down and we had the...
No, no.
We'd be happy. So we are... Sure.
Good. A roll call.
So we have a motion by Manda and a second by Conway. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
We moved I M E from the agenda as well.
Right.
So we're on to the approval of the hiring recommendations per exhibit A.
So I'll move to approve exhibit A, hiring recommendations, numbers one oh nine through one fourteen is posted. And then one fifteen through one nineteen is presented.
We have to review this.
And, oh, okay. Okay, sorry, Mike.
Just getting there. Kathy Belvia, teacher of foreign language, leave of absence. Allison McGinnis, teacher of fine arts, new hire. Brian McNulty, assistant boys bowling, new hire. Bev Monson, teacher of foreign language, new hire. And Sue Walker, teacher of business education at the home campus, new hire.
Jim, second, roll call.
Motion by Manda, second by Walsh. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
I'm staying. It's my son, Walsh, on the...
I have five yes and one extension. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now I have to do the bills, the approval of the payment of the bills. So give me the new number for the big one.
Oh, I would like to vote on, let me find it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You already have it, Carol?
Yes.
The big number is?
Seven million, two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Can you read it again, please? I'm sorry.
Seven million, two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I move to approve the payment of the bills for ten twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen in the amount of seven million, two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Now, I have some questions if you don't mind. Oh, it's, it's, yeah, so we have discussion. I'm confused by things. We met on the eleventh of October and yet on October thirteenth, we issued a number of checks and none of them seems to fit in the criteria to be issued between board meetings without approval. So I'm really confused by that. And I think we, I, we have a problem with approving them after they're issued. So I just want to point that out at this point.
Thank you. I will look into it for you.
These do not, to my knowledge, they don't look like they fit the criteria for paying bills between meetings.
I have to look to see if they're impressed checks.
For me, it's not, it's not a problem. It's just from the public perspective, from a transparency perspective, they're thinking that we are approving of these payments and they're going to be paid today or tomorrow. And they've already been paid in between board meetings. And my only concern is about that perception to the public. And, you know, that, that's really, we're only approving of the ones that actually have a date of ten twenty-five sixteen. But there's, and I really think it should be separated, but... Well, they are, what do you mean separated, Catherine? Well, they shouldn't, why are we approving them? They've already been paid. I mean, it's kind of disingenuous to the public to be like, that's just my perspective. I'm just on a transparency position.
Let me, I would like to check whether our council board coordinator wants to see what's, what's going on.
You'll let us know what's going on there.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
So I have a motion by Anderson, second by Manda. Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Biandi?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And I have four yes and two no. Motion carries.
What's the other one?
I just said Louisiana, check number three three one eight five eight for the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-three cents. I move that we do not pay.
Let me, let me move to approve, then you can vote no. How about that?
Okay, fine. I'll withdraw my votes and...
Thank you. I move to pay check number three 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 eight five eight to Hodges in Louisiana in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-three cents.
So it would be three three one eight three eight.
Three three one.
Eight three one, eight three eight.
Eight five eight.
Check three three one eight five eight.
That's right, the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second by Jim Walsh.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
So I have four yes and two no. Motion carries.
That is the last item on the agenda? We put those off because we didn't have any? Oh, no, technical session, that's, I see. Okay, so then I move to approve regular meeting minutes for October eleven, two thousand and sixteen, excuse me.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm just changing the motion. And the motion is by Anderson, second by Conway. Mrs. Biandi?
I stay because I was not at the meeting.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
I'm staying, is that what, not in attendance.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have four yes, two no. Motion, or what, two extensions. Motion carries.
Okay, that is the last item on the agenda.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Manda?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Biandi?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.